This conference will now be recorded.
We'll call the order of the Monterey Select Board on October 22 at 6:01 PM. And we got the town clerk here, thank you Chris.
Sure.
We have to do the municipal borrowing. So this year we're borrowing $857,305.78. Are there any questions before we go ahead and sign?
Nope. We spend ages looking at these things. I hope we're ready to sign.
Alright, I'll move that we approve and sign the borrowing documents. If there's no other discussion, we'll call.
Can alternate.
We'll call off.
Yes.
And yes, so it's an end approval. So we got, I think like six or seven signatures and then Chris has to take it from there. This is gonna take a minute.
Pink is Select Board. The pink tabs.
You said pink?
Yes, two tabs.
One of them got full at ends, you gotta be careful. And then your orange tabs.
Okay.
So I just send two documents because when some proposed wording changes on the bylaws, I can later retype it. That way you can cut parts to your document, so you've got it. It's a tricky one, with the changes.
I know.
I think what we can do is we can work it out on our own and then you can always compare documents. So even if you don't keep track changes on while you're changing it, we can make all the changes we want and then compare documents to the one that the bylaw review committee gave us. And it will show up as we do if that changes.
So we have to sign all these, right?
All the pink.
You forgot one.
What was it?
Yeah. I'll need it opened to that, but let me just make sure I don't forget one. Easy, it's easy. And that one, the one you, the final one you caught had the tab on the other side, which I don't miss.
When I sign and stamp it, I'll go through, make sure everything's.
Yeah.
Now, should I go ahead and make copies before I turn this back to you guys? Or will somebody else be responsible for that before it leaves?
Roger will.
Okay.
Roger will.
I'll do that and scan it too. So I just wanted to give a brief update on early voting as well. It's going gangbusters. We're over 150 mail-in ballots returned Saturday. We had 18 voters. Yesterday, we had six or seven, I can't remember right off the top of my head. The one thing that I do need to make the Select Board aware of, the grant that we were due to receive, it actually ended up being only applicable for overtime hours.
Okay.
So I nixed the police presence for the early voting, which was optional anyway.
Okay.
We'll still have police presence all day on Election Day and counting as well. And I will coordinate with Brian to see how that grant could be used to cover that thing. But that's pretty much the update.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, thank you.
Alright, I'll take care of this and bring it back. And then if there's anything else, you guys, just ask me when I come back.
Thank you. And then, yeah, like we said, you'll get a copy for scan. Scan would be possible. The next order of business is touch base with Dennis about the MVP grant for the culvert in the center of town. Just to review briefly, we've, Dennis has led us through phases one and two. We're now going to be at 100% permitting and final design. And phase three of MVP is construction. Last year, we deferred applying for phase three because the product, estimated project cost rose to 3.8, roughly 3.8 million, which would leave the town responsible with about 800,000 as opposed to the prior estimate of 2.8, which would have left the town with a $280,000 responsibility because of the 3 million cap. So we're back. MVP is restarting their cycle with expressions of interest. And we're going to talk about and think about some ways we might be able to make the project affordable.
And as I recall, there was the possibility that the amount was going to change in this cycle. Do you know if it has?
So far, it hasn't. The legislature, the other state has other priorities. And there seems to be some movement though to add additional funding to projects, including, and categories of projects, including MVP. But we'll have to wait and see what, what happens in Boston. But we were kind of hoping that the maximum amount of funding, which is currently 3 million, would be increased to 4 million. If that happened, then we might not have to pay around with the, right, with that local match. So as much. So as Justin mentioned, they're essentially started with the expression of interest that they've sent out statewide, of course, to new and existing projects. And I've also submitted a grant request form anticipating the, probably around the February-March timeline, that the actual funding details would be made available. They released those in anticipation of accepting applications, probably 100 before, sort of late May, early to mid-June. That's been historically the timeline. They release on or about, let's say, April 1st and it's due, say, mid-June. So I thought that, given the fact that we're, the town is looking at other sources of funding, that we'd look to possibly in anticipation of maybe not having a maximum increase in the MVP side for projects, looking to explore the possibility of the local match being made by federal funds. Now, federal funds.
Does it say a lot about, obviously it wouldn't be suggested.
Yes. For example, federal fund, the state will not enable project funding to be matched with local state grants. So for example, the Hoopai Road project, that's federal money that came through. And that federal money can be used to match with the MVP, the state grant that we currently have. And I believe that's been done for a rain garden, it's an upper garden. So if it's a different type of funding in this particular case for MVP, if we can find something that would match a portion of the overall project for that amount of money, that's, that's 100% matchable, let's, let's say that.
But that would have to be, it would have to be a grant for part of that project.
Yes.
Or it is not, yes.
That's right.
Okay.
It could be, you know, certain materials, certain design, certain parts of, of that grant that would enable us to cobble together, you know, a competitive application. There's also the possibility on federal level of looking for, let's say, special or discretionary funding. Now discretionary funding is kind of interesting because historically it's been made available to certain senators, representatives. And it should be available, again, depending on what happens in Washington, but we shall see. But it's an opportunity to look for that discretionary funding. For example, Springfield and I believe Pittsfield has received funding in that category for projects, for major projects. So that would be one opportunity. I'd like to look further into so-called RISE grant, which is rural innovation. Rural Innovation. Let's see. It's an acronym for.
Rural Innovation Stronger Economy.
Stronger Economies, thank you.
Stronger.
Totally Stronger Economy. Stronger Economies, right. So that's, that's one possibility, although that talks about regional partnerships. So, you know, whether or not it's, it's doable to be eligible to participate, that would be explored more.
Hard to imagine either Otis or Greg Barrington's gonna be like, yeah, we're on 23, we'll come in on it with you.
Right, right.
Comment about more money and now that Berkshire Regional Transportation representing the Southern.
Thank you, Justin.
But they. We had you, Brian.
They have, they're having a meeting, there's gonna be some kind of presentation, I believe it's the second week of November, on other funds that are available for municipalities. I'll get more of the data or the information and give it to you.
Sure.
You know, that they're, it's about, they went through bridges and, you know, some of the projects that are going on, Pittsfield, Adams and stuff.
Yes.
But they made the comment in passing, so I'll write them in the morning and see what I can find out.
That's, that's fine. That's fine.
Great.
That was all our.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
See you tomorrow, yes. Have a good evening, everybody.
Me too.
But I'll get it, I'll.
I appreciate it.
I was interested in going with a sort of a comment in passing.
Oh, sure, yeah, yeah. And even in the federal category, approaching MEMA, the Massachusetts type of FEMA agency that we participate in, of course, for our hazard mitigation study, every five years we update our plans. And in the past, we haven't been imperative because of the cost benefit analysis. Basically, for FEMA, through the BRIC program, they like to give money out in projects that, of course, deal with loss, either property or loss of life. You know, and they look for documentation such as flooding and damage to homes as a result of that to be proof that you'd be eligible and competitive. So we have to look further into that to see if there've been any changes relative to, to their requirements. So the reason I submitted the grant request form for the overall project application in springtime is that any of the time that I spent on, on requesting that, we consider that research time and that any of those hours doing that would be applicable to the overall funding request for the application. So just to be fair, you know, rather than come back and do it separately, I'd rather, if the board agrees, just approach it that way.
One question I have for you, Dennis. I touched base with Pauline today, I saw her, and she did wanna talk to you. Did you, have you had a chance to chat with her?
Yeah, we communicated by email this morning. And I said that I'd like to chat with her between 12:30 and 2:00 tomorrow.
Yeah. So just so you, Pauline's idea, she works for a climate organization that lobbies the state and she knows our state rep, our state senator.
Yes.
Mark.
Marky.
Uh, Mark. Paul.
Paul Mark.
Paul Mark. She has a working relationship because of that. And also being involved in the climate organization understands pretty well what we're going on with here, where we have a culvert that is predicted to be flowing over because of more extreme weather events. So she's wondering if we could attack it through the state legislature to potentially, I don't know, make an exception or change the whole program, but somehow make it so that it's more affordable for the town to do something that the state already has a decent amount of resources put in through, because we have, we paid almost nothing for phase one and two, I think.
Yeah, it was, it was a pretty good match.
So the state's already paid for all the engineering and all the public meetings and information sessions and surveying that has gone into and 100% design and permitting. The state has more or less footed the bill.
And it's ridiculous for them, for the project to not go forward because the last bike is too big for a small town.
Exactly. And in phase one, which was the planning phase back in 17 and 18, we were designated, I believe in 18, as a MVP community. That was, I believe, a 40% match. But in phase two, we are 10% local match, as you pointed out.
Because of the rural, we were designated rural or even like poverty rural.
Well, in our case, it was disadvantaged because of the age, aging population. So we fell into that category, which was very beneficial for the town.
But all that being said, we have a few different routes. We have the federal trying to seek natural matching or entirely separate federal funding or trying to lobby our state legislators. So Pauline, I think, has some ideas about what that might look like. I don't know, because it is a program that's the same all across the state. I don't know if they'd ever really make an exception like this, but I think it's probably worth.
Unless there's discretionary funds for the state.
Yeah, so.
Well, you never know, to start looking and.
We're also, we're also very much on the cusp. You know, it's not a $10 million project and the cap is 3 million. It's a $3.8 million project and the cap is 3 million. And so we're really at the short end of the stick there.
But also I think the frequency with which they raise those caps is to, hasn't kept pace with inflation.
Yeah.
And I mean, look at what's happening to the other bridge projects. Like this is a culvert, I, but it's arguably, you could argue it's actually becoming bridge. And look what's happening in, in Barrington and Shaku, right? With the bridge that goes by Isar. Right, I mean, we aren't alone, we're planning ahead and these are people who have left the maintenance too late. And the number of years it will take, they've had to close bridges, it's gonna take years, it's extremely expensive. And now that the result of closing that bridge is gonna cause the closure of other bridges because they can't take the additional traffic. It's causing EMS problems, like.
Yeah.
But the reality is, the state's gonna have to cope with the fact that, I'm sorry, but a 3 million cap isn't, either they have to change the way you do the project so that it doesn't have that many stages and you just, I don't know. And it's kind of ridiculous. There's no question in my mind that the Army Corps of Engineers has a bridge you could freaking pluck in there. Right, they, they would take a tank, never mind a semi trailer, right? But no, do we do that? No, we make people take years to do it. That's it, so.
So from here, Dennis, I think it's probably quite a bit more research and just poking around these different areas. Do you have a grant form for us tonight?
Yes, that's, I believe in the packet. Oh, I don't have it, you sent it to me? I don't have it. Okay. I'm sorry, just happened to have one. Maybe it's in there. This is the only change.
Thank you.
So with, with the board's approval, I can fill out the expression of interest using the current numbers that had been presented in the phase two by the engineers. It's, it's relatively short.
I would love to say that it's considering to be, oh, estimated 100,000 because it's 10% of this plus that we made there. Because it's a 3.8 million.
I think what they do, I'm trying to remember, they cover 10%, but once it hits 3 million or 3.3 million, their max award is 3 million. So we just be responsible for the other 100,000.
For that.
Which at this point, by the way, is probably 4 million.
Yeah, I know.
There's barely this final, final phase.
So. The only thing I don't know about Dennis is the 72 hours. I'm not sure how that fits into the grand scheme of our.
Yeah, it's based on a couple of things. Basically, experience in doing the second phase.
Yeah.
But as I may have indicated, the details will be coming out. And what I usually do is present a maximum number.
Yeah.
And I almost always commit under that number.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
So just in case there's something that they identified in springtime that we don't know about now, but yet that, that's a maximum number.
Yeah, alright.
Another thing too, I've talked to Dennis about other grant opportunities is I had a online meeting with some people from, through Berkshire Regional Planning. And it was a lot of people from the eastern part of the state and they were talking about different opportunities through green communities and all these other sustainability grants. But one of the things is Karen Pelto from the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission is now in charge of something called Berkshire Funding Focus, which they're trying to bring together in one spot, all of these local, state, federal grant opportunities. So I talked to Dennis about that. I'm trying to, I'm working out, I think next week I'm gonna try and, you know, have a Zoom meeting with her or something. Maybe I can get Dennis in on that too, just to sort of talk about it and see where it's at, go that way too, so.
Alright. Well, whoa, if there's no opposition, go ahead, sorry, I'm here.
Yeah.
Sorry, I just found it. I told these things.
I am a slow computer too.
And we'll just have to be in touch as we.
Yeah.
Move forward about what route we end up taking.
Yep.
And, and Courtney too, is, will you, you still meet with Courtney or is the phase two all wrapped up?
It's pretty much wrapped up.
Yeah.
I think, I think they may have, they have received, I believe, the county town approval. I'm pretty sure they have. So they may just be waiting on one or two others, perhaps US Army Corps.
And so maybe we'll get something at the end of, like, this is the wrap-up of the project.
Yes.
Here's where we are.
There should be enough time to receive all the approvals that are required before they actually release the notice of funding in the spring.
And I remember that was part of the reason we held off as well.
That's right.
So that we would actually be shovel-ready.
Right, exactly.
So.
And shovel-ready is a term used heavily by the federal grants programs. And they like to see the same thing, so we'll see what that figures.
Well, thank you, Dennis.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you. The next item is, on the agenda is speeding in the village and also on Mount Hunger Road. There was a, a letter.
It was, yeah, you know, from a citizen concerning Mount Hunger Road and speed and wondering if we could put down. I, I haven't seen them, they were in Egremont, I guess, they mentioned them, essentially speed bumps in the road to slow things down. So we know that in general, from some, some studies, analysis that Brian and the other police officers in town have done, that even through town, people aren't going as fast as some people.
Feel they are.
Feel they are, assume they are, but I don't know what's going on on Mount Hunger Road. If it was a, I would never wanna, I, I would choose Hoopai Road before I'd go down Hunger Road to cross over.
Well, it's, it's a steep hill.
It's a steep hill.
But.
Hard to imagine a lot of people were using that as a throughway.
To get to the other side, you'd cross over to 23.
It's, it must be largely traffic that's actually going.
Yeah.
And it's not like there's an inordinate number, how is this on the road?
Because, because Paul's here, why don't we talk about the village first?
Okay.
So Paul, did you see the report from the police department?
I did not.
Okay.
I did not. So when I heard that they've assumed that people are saying that the cars are going faster than they're really going, I live in the old firehouse.
Right, right.
And I've been there for eight years. And I can tell you, I got so good at reading the speeds because the blinker was down there. So I'd watch the car and I'd say 45, I'd look down there, it'd be 43 miles an hour. I don't know how they came up with these numbers, did they actually radar check?
Yeah, they did, yeah. They did radar.
But where were they sitting?
At the community center.
Yeah, well.
So they caught.
Do you know, do you know that there's an app, I think Jim told me, there is an app. And that once she starts to sit there, there's an app that people have and they tell you where the police are in each town. So that is not, not a great way to do it. I, I mean, I.
Well, I tend to, yeah, I tend to agree with you.
If I'm out there, nobody's gonna slow down. So here's what I have found. When you put the blinking light up by, what, what's that road there?
Eaton Road.
Eaton Road, yeah, okay. Hannah and I both immediately said, wow, people are doing 25 miles an hour. It was so obvious. And, and I even ran up the street and looked and I said, it's up there. So then they took it down. Immediately I said, you know, I could, you would not believe how fast people go down through there, but it's not when the cops are sitting there. So I had to pass another guy coming into town, he had to be doing 60 miles an hour. Now, I know that that's not the, so I'll try and keep it. So as, the minute that, that didn't have the radar detector on that, people started by going faster. I mean, you could tell immediately, you know? And I would say fast meaning 10 to 15 miles an hour faster. Nobody does 25. So I don't know where you cut it off at, you know? But now, a lot of times I, I go out into the road and I say, and I try to be nice about it. I give them, you know, this and the whole thing. And I get less fingers than I used to get. But what was really interesting to me is, is a couple of weeks ago, it was taken up again and I just went out like, and three people stopped. And they said to me, because they see me out there, you know? And they said to me, what's the problem? I said, well, it's a 25 mile an hour speed limit. And they said, no, it's not. It's not 25 till you get into town. So that's the problem. You got, you got a 25 mile an hour speed limit, I know you got one sitting on the thing there where the blinking thing used to be. But it's, it's 1,000 feet up the road from Eaton before where you have to sign. And then when people come around that bend, I don't know that you ever stood there, but when you make that bend, you don't see town. So you don't know, it could be a country road if you're not used to the area here. So they have, and there's no, there's no, when they turn the bend, there's nothing that says 25 miles an hour. Until you, well, now that that one that they had on the telephone pole that used to blink past my place, that doesn't work anymore.
Isn't there one right at Eaton Road at 25 mile per hour speed limit?
So, so.
No.
There's one before Eaton Road.
And it's 800 or 900 feet up the road.
Then we've had the trailer and the trailer stopped working for a period of time? Like, I believe it's working again? The blinking speed sign by the school, the police chief has on his list to replace, but he needs capital money for it, so he's hoping in the next, it's replaced?
Yeah, it's a, you know, they purchased it, Jim purchased it.
Okay, so the highway department's got a new, and so it's, it's, it's in the works.
And so what happens is people make the bend, they don't see that right away.
Yeah.
So they don't know what the speed limit is. And you can't see town, you don't know you're going into a town. So they keep going and then, and I'll watch them. And, and then they'll see the blinking light and maybe 50 feet before it, they start to slow down.
See, I thought there was a 25 mile per hour speed limit right there because as you come out town, past Sandersfield Road, going out of town towards like east, towards Otis. When you get past Sandersfield Road, there's a 40 mile per hour speed limit sign and across from that is a 25. See, I think one of the problems is that when we go from 40 to 25. See, I think one of the problems is that when we go from forty to twenty-five. And so it doesn't get people enough.
Frank told me that. I don't agree with it, but that, that premise, but. And the other thing is, anybody coming from Sandersfield Road doesn't see any speed limit sign. Cause they turn, they get on the main road and now there's no, there's nothing that says twenty-five miles an hour. I guess until you get in town and I don't even know if there's one then. So. And when you're coming from Sandersfield Road, if you're not familiar with the area, you know, like it would work. You can't, at that angle, when you turn the bend, you don't see town. I mean, as a matter of fact, you see no houses for a while before, uh, before the, uh, schoolhouse.
So I'm familiar with the problem. For a short, for a few months, I lived at the corner house where Kevin lives now.
Right.
So I'm very familiar with what, what's going on here and I, and I agree when I was living there when I was younger. People were speeding then, they're speeding now. Um, we, the radar, uh, trailer radar seems to have helped when it's functioning.
If you're coming that way, not if you're coming from Sandersfield Road.
Yeah, not if you're coming from Sandersfield Road. So the one thing that we haven't addressed is, we're getting the school, the sign fixed by the school. The one proposal that you've made that we haven't done yet, maybe not the one, but the one that I can think of that really seems to make a lot of sense to me is just adding a speed sign under the woman walking her child.
Yeah.
Right? So if we add that, the problem is, so when the police were sitting doing radar, which they did for six hours.
Right.
Like you, I tend to agree with you that when you see a police car, you slow down.
Yep.
So they said the average speed of people going out of town was twenty-eight point one miles per hour.
Yeah.
And the average speed of people coming into town was twenty-six point eight. So, but look, I see a police car, I hit the brakes. So, and they're can't, they can't.
Jen is the one that told me there's an app that you can get.
Well, not only, so you used to get.
It tells you exactly where the cops.
So it used to be Waze. Waze would tell you where the cops are. Now, my phone, I have Google Maps. Now Google Maps tells you. I don't know if Apple Maps does, but they probably.
So all it takes is one person after they park there to drive by and plug it in. Then everybody knows the cops right there.
Well, it takes two things. One person has to enter it and other people have to have it on. I can speak for you, but I don't generally drive around this area with Google Maps on.
No, no, no.
I, I, I kinda know where the cops hang out, but I'm sure there are people that are coming through that aren't. Like, we get a lot of people from out of town. The, the question I was gonna ask is now, if we are getting, you know, Jim got that new radar detecting sign. I was gonna raise a question of, well, we can put it back where it was or we could put it somewhere else.
I think that's what they were talking about.
Right, the question is where.
Where do you get this? Where do they take them power from the?
It's solar.
It's solar?
Yeah. The idea was, the idea was to move it further out closer to where it changes to twenty-five.
Maybe where the speed trailer has been?
Well, there, or if you bring it down further. And you got Sandersfield Road and you got people coming around the bend right there would seem to be the best place to me to have it, you know? Cause then that catches the direction of people coming from both places.
I think.
And a stop sign, I mean, a speed limit sign, I, I don't know.
You think the radars, the flashing lights do?
You look at the towns right here. I was talking to Jen about it, like Egremont, you know, what did they do? They had that sun映 blink in.
They pulled people, they got a reputation because they pulled everyone over.
And you know what? That reputation still works. Nobody speeds through that town.
Well, it worked for Monterey for a while, but it's been, you know, people, you also get all kinds of complaints when you start calling people for going five over. And they're, and everyone's gonna pull over. There's a balance.
There is. It's a twenty-five mile speed limit. So if people are going fifteen miles over the speed limit, the percentage over the speed limit, it's not like you're doing fifty, you're doing sixty-five in a fifty, you know? You're do, you're doing forty i- in a twenty-five.
So they did.
An enormous difference.
In, in their six hours of sitting there, the high was a forty and I believe that that person got pulled over. So, and after this study came in, I was headed west on twenty-three and someone was getting pulled over, coming right out of town.
All I, all I can tell you is I'm out there a lot because I'm working, I've been working on that whole bank, you know, cleaning it up for the winter and, and, uh, and it's, it wasn't too bad. It wasn't too bad with the, and that's just with the twenty-five. But anybody coming out of Sandersfield, forget about it. And, and you can understand why. There's, there's no, there's no, there's nothing that tells them.
But you know what they had going for them? They had to come in theory to a complete stop.
Complete stop, yeah.
So I think right now the police and the highway are aware of it. They're figuring out where to put the sign. We could talk for hours about it, but I think at the end of the day, we'll let them.
Sure.
They know a lot about the roads that we don't.
Sure, but if you had, if you have one place to put it, after Sandersfield Road and the other one, they come around the bend right there. Have it right there and that would slow people coming in.
Right across from the community center.
Yes, yeah, yeah. And that would slow people down because a lot of times people, if you're walking, you're supposed to walk into traffic, correct? You ride your bicycle with traffic. So people walk up that side of the road and then cross to go over to the community center. And people are coming around the bend there, you know? I don't think anybody's been, well, nobody's been hit since the time I was there, I don't think, but. But anyway, that, that's, that's it. And, and whatever happens, happens. I'm, I'm kinda at the point now where I'm just. I, I don't think it's ever gonna change personally, but, but if that sign was up there, a blinking sign coming into town, I think that would make a big difference.
Well, we're getting, so hopefully you'll, you'll see it soon, so.
Cause you're right, you're right at Sandersfield Road, right?
Yeah, pretty much. No, 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 no. I'm right across from New Marmon.
New Marmon, oh, that's right.
I'm gonna send you the report just so you have it. Police report.
Yeah, sounds good.
Look at it, go, do whatever you want. But, uh, we, we are addressing it.
I'm, I'm, you know, I'm willing to be a speed limit wrenching tower.
Well, you're a very entertaining wrench.
Alright, thank you, Paul.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Would you bring a dog with orange snacks on? Did you bring your dog with snack?
Yeah, you know, I, I know, I was talking about, well, somebody said something here about the speed. I, I just, I was seriously thinking about on the parapet side of my building, taking a dummy. Just throwing a dummy out there sometimes when people are coming down the road fast. Alright, thanks a lot.
Good night.
Thank you for your service, everyone.
The other speeding concern was just one person on the road. I think there's only one house there. And there's a big hill right above it. People coming fast down the hill. Um, I think we should probably just let Brian know that. Just forward it to him?
Yep.
You wanna just forward it?
I may have, I, I will, yep. I'm looking to see, I could, I was wondering if there was a twenty-five mile per hour speed limit at Eaton Road, but I'll, I'll double check.
It's, it's further out town. It's further closer to Otis. That, last time Paul came in, he brought a whole map. I would've thought the same thing as you. It's a couple hundred feet more towards Otis.
East.
I think it's past maybe that forty that you're talking about, uh, it's forty going east. I think the westbound sign is a little bit closer to Otis.
Yeah, yeah.
You pass it all the time, I pass it all the time. I think you pass it all the time.
I do too, so.
So we.
I'm sorry, my head, I thought it was like right at Eaton Road.
Yeah. And the new sign to replace the schoolhouse broken sign has already been purchased.
It has, yeah, yeah. Jim, Jim bought it through, uh, Pro- Properties.
And, uh, usually those ones keep track of speed data too, so.
I, I don't know if ours do. They asked that question before.
The ones we got up by the beach were supposed to.
Yeah.
That old one at the schoolhouse is very old. It probably doesn't, but I think the new ones at the school.
Somebody asked Brian and he said no. Okay, so we, I can, I'll check.
Moving on, we just have the disclosures of financial interest from Noel and Pauline.
So I, I have an awkward question, do I? Um, someone who, I mean, I, I have to say that I do think someone who works full-time for, for Gould, if they have a significant financial stake in doing this, might need to recuse themselves.
Yeah, so this.
Can I see the form, please?
So, um, these forms are like applications or disclosures, right? But then here. There's a determination by the appointing authority. So if it was a mayor, a board, um, you, we don't need to sign off and say, oh yeah, we think this person can participate.
Oh, I realize. I, 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 but I'm raising that question. My concern is that, um, were we to, like, someone who works part-time there, it seems less likely to be a conflict, but a full-time employee, um.
Well, isn't she, where is she? She's in the management, right? If it was say, just like the gardener or something.
Right, but a full-time employee that's part of the management, arguably a management team. If it, if this, like, and it's a little confusing to me too, because reading it, it sounded as though it was a question of closing, stopping the gravel permit and rehabilitating the site, but that doesn't seem to be.
This is the way I understand it. And right, I do work for Gould Farm. I don't think that I have any vested financial interest in, in this. But just to disclose, obviously I work for Gould Farm. I don't think the decision on this conflict of these people disclosing their financial interest, I have a financial interest in.
Yeah.
As I understand the gravel pit.
Right.
They're in the process of finishing it up and covering it over in woodchips. And I say that in part because if you go there, you can see that it's being covered over in woodchips and regrade it.
For decommissioning and restoration of a gravel pit.
Yeah, so this is, I think there was a plan of how to regrade and cover in woodchips. But now they're saying there's a wetland that needs to be protected and, and so they can't follow the initial plan. And just, it's probably worth reading the minutes.
Okay.
That just came out. So on the September nineteenth minutes. Uh, new, right under, the first item under new business is a WPA request for determination, a hundred Gould room. Submitted by Gould Farm for the decommission and restoration of a gravel yard. Pauline Banducci and Noel Wiki disclosed that they are employees of Gould, Gould Farm. Brian Sider for Forsight briefed the members on the proposed project. Don Hutcher asked if there's any consideration to replicating the vibrant ecological wetland currently there. The area currently has a lot of wetland life. Applicant Lizanne Finston of Gould Farm is planning to restore the area back to the natural, natural habitat prior to a gravel yard. Their request was approved and for Don Hutcher, Pauline Banducci motion second vote. N three and four. I don't know what that means, N three or N four. Also, to some degree, I think we act a little bit late on these. I think these also got submitted late because this was the nine nineteen meeting and these are dated middle of September. Actually, Pauline just dated much earlier. Noel's just dated September sixteen. Uh, it got, it was missing a little bit of the back page where she had signed her name basically. Uh, but here it is, Pauline.
Basically, what I'm reading is this already happened.
Yeah.
So the.
These were in our mailbox. I didn't, it took me a couple of weeks to get to them, but by the time I got to them anyway, we didn't really have time because they, this one was submitted September sixteenth and the meeting was on the nineteenth. And we didn't meet between the sixteenth and the nineteenth, so.
So, I mean, it looks like they've already made a decision, so.
I don't know, I don't know that the decision. Final, I can't really interpret that fully.
The request was approved and for, that's.
Request for determination, but then I think that.
Gould Farm for the decommissioning and restoration of a gravel yard. PB and MW closed their employees of Gould. Brian Sider for Forsight briefed the members on proposed project. DH asked if there was any consideration to replication of, replication of the vibrant ecological wetland currently there. The area currently has a lot of wetland life. Applicant Lizanne Finstein of Gould Farm is planning to restore the area back to the natural habitat prior to a gravel yard. Their request was approved and for. DH slash PB MSV, whatever that is.
That's Don Hutcher made the motion, Pauline Banducci second, motion second vote, I think.
DH is Don Hutcher, PB is Pauline Banducci and MSV?
Motion second vote.
Okay.
Yeah, the Concom's minutes or something, it's a little hard to decipher, but.
I don't know what was approved and for.
Yeah, I, I really don't know. I, I just kind of pick, it's kind of foreign to me. Uh, these forms are late, but I don't, I, I, I'm not sure that the, we're fully done. I think between now and the next time we meet, they're not, there's not gonna be another Concom meeting. So we could definitely just spend more time figuring out what's going on. I really don't. Don't know. Technically, if they wanted to participate on the matter, these should have been submitted well in advance. The select board should have
Right.
completed the second half. So. But if, it would, it can't be submitted three days before the meeting and then.
Right.
I mean, there's so many different things with, with ethics and recusing yourself and sometimes you just announce, I'm recusing myself. And sometimes you could maybe declare that it, there's no way it has any effect, but this is saying it is, there is a financial interest and you're disclosing it, but if the appointing authority still says that you can participate as appointing authority, I have reviewed a particular matter and the financial interest identified by a municipal employee. I have determined that the financial interest is not so substantial as to be deemed likely to affect the integrity of the services which the municipality may expect from the authority.
I mean, this sounds weird, but if this matter is resolved, I'm inclined not to sign this because if we didn't sign it prior to the making of the system, it's kind of misleading to sign.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I mean, and I don't, the thing that I don't know is I think it's still an ongoing.
I'm not, I'm not certain.
I think it's still an ongoing issue because because, uh, I think once you do the request for determination. They might, I think there's just more going on. Is it on the next?
I'm looking at this.
Wasn't there a request for determination really just a step to say you can move forward? You, you need to do a notice of intent? Isn't that how that works?
You know what? I'm not really too familiar, but my sense is that it's not resolved because there's still.
There's nothing on the seventeen, uh, there, well, this was, so this also already occurred, but there, there wasn't anything on it.
So Roger, can you just look into it? Maybe just ask him or, or Pauline and Noel or whoever you want? And just try to figure out, is the gravel pit.
Matter resolved?
Were matter completely resolved or was that a first step in the process or what's going on? Because we're just lacking a little bit of information.
But, and I think also we're lacking clarity, but also there needs to be acknowledgement on our side, the process for them doing it, you know, three days before the meeting.
Yeah, well, only one was submitted. One was apparently dated much earlier, but then I was gone most of September. By the time I realized they were in the mailbox, I just.
Yeah, but they're.
It was already too late. Because actually the lot, we met September fourth and we didn't meet again until a couple of weeks, September twenty-fourth. So there was no way we could have approved either, really.
Too, as they knew, I mean, they have to have their agenda up a week beforehand, so they knew about it. You know.
Well, actually, some of the Concom stuff has to be up more than.
Their, their stuff usually comes in three to four days ahead of time.
So we are, that comes in, so it's not posted?
No, no, it comes in, it comes in and we post it, you know, but it's usually three or four days.
Before the meeting?
Before the meeting.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Sometimes it comes in a, a, a longer than that.
This is not the same mistle that you said. That's part of what was getting.
Well, okay, so part of what happened, and maybe I didn't clarify this, they both also submitted twenty-three B three forms. But Donna said that the section nineteen is really the appropriate form in this case. So she said, there's nothing to act on as far as the twenty-three V three. And if you follow the twenty-three V three down, I think it indicates if you go down a little bit. I think it indicates that I feel that I can confirm my duties and it isn't reliant on an appointing authority. So for instance, there have been situations where I feel that it, is it twenty-three V three for an elected official?
Um, this, the problem I've got is it actually, there was wrong form. It was written on the form that is substantially different about what's happening at this. What it says on here is, they want to destroy the gravel pit and this area might stop them from their current plan. The contractor, Lee Tryon, doesn't believe it is a true wetland and would like to bulldoze it.
Oh, that's my one here.
I know that.
Uh, which one?
That's the form. That's the form that you emailed us, that is.
Well, yeah, on the, yeah, the Pauline, yeah, the Pauline, it's.
That's the twenty-three.
Right, it might, okay, so here's the thing, you're not wrong, that's a different form. However, that form that perhaps wasn't the one they needed to send us. Nevertheless, is giving us information that is substantively different from what's written on this form.
Yeah.
And is making me feel a little bit uncomfortable about.
I don't think it's substantively different, because that's basically my understanding, they're using bulldozers and excavators. But mostly you see bulldozers, because I, I watch it, they're using bulldozers to regrade the area.
Okay.
And then they're dumping chips on it, so basically, if you look at it and you extrapolate. The edge of the current gravel is basically coming right to this puddle.
Right.
And probably regrading it, if you leave.
Okay.
That steep of gravel, over time will probably grow.
Right.
And, and no vegetation is going to take hold.
Right, yep.
At that grade, so I think what they're doing is they're grading out more shallow. So that when a woodchip at natural vegetation can return, they can't, you can't have vegetation on too steep of a grade.
Right, yeah, that's right.
So that was the plan.
You also don't get wetland on a steep grade either, no?
Well, the, the puddles.
I'm just saying.
The puddles at the bottom.
Right, okay.
And that's where there's various.
Debate about what was there, right, yeah.
So, I don't really know the whole context of it, but. I don't, Roger will figure out where, where, where we are in the process. The problem is, who, what, if you go to the top of the twenty-three form. The very top.
That's the.
Yeah, disclosure.
Can I just talk to you about twenty-three D three?
So. The problem is, like, when I fill out a twenty-three B three, because I've been told to do so before.
Right.
If you say that, because I'm elected, I don't. Uh, no one appointed me, so I can't go to my appointing authority, so I'll fill out a twenty-three B three and I just give it to the town clerk.
Right.
And then if I've said that I think I can act on something, then I can, and I mean, obviously if later on down the road. The state ethics commission said, well, you really shouldn't have done that, they, they can come to that determination, but I've done everything that I can just by filling it out. Which, so when filling that out, maybe they thought, and I don't know if they went to the state ethics commission.
They thought, they know that out, they can just act.
The problem is with the section nineteen.
We have to.
The appointing authority needs to approve it, so I don't know where they got the advice, it was proba- probably from the state ethics commission, maybe not. Uh, I guess I can't really assume, but usually I go to the state ethics commission with these kinds of questions to fill out both. But according to Donna, they really should have only have filled out the section nineteen.
Right.
Not the section twenty-three. Um, and certainly filling out the twenty-three gives one the impression that, okay, I've wiped my hands clean of it and now I think that I can act on that. And I will act on it, whereas the nineteen is reliant on the appointing authority to, to give their blessing to you.
But now, at least I have a clearer picture of why there was a discrepancy between the two, and I told.
It's, it's con, it's very convoluted, I don't think I understand it fully. I forget if they've already, I don't know if they've already gone through the process, I think they kind of already went through the process to be allowed to. Do this, and then in the middle of regrading it. This small pond puddle area, I mean, you can go see for yourself.
Right.
Was kind of discovered and there were questions about, okay, can we bulldoze over?
Right, right, right.
Even though that was initially planned, so in any case, we're going to put these off of the meeting. There's, I mean, it's like when the last employee or official who came with the municipal disclosure initially came with the wrong form. It gets convoluted and I, and I do get that point of things, but we need to get.
Right.
It's squared away, we're not going to approve the wrong form. So administrative assistant.
I have, uh, hopefully this week we'll have some second interviews. I've, I've been in touch with Lindsay Katz, who worked with Mary, and she's scheduling some. Uh, I've set aside, uh, tomorrow afternoon and Thursday afternoon, I haven't heard back when the actual second interview is. But it's more than likely will be a Zoom meeting and a Zoom interview, and also. I believe, uh, Chris will be part of that as well, the town clerk, so he'll be part of that as well.
To get an interview?
Yep, an actual interview, so they, they, she called him, uh, Monday, I think it was, she, she called him. Uh, and spoke with him and. That's being scheduled.
Do you know that the others are ten residents or?
They're not, the other two, but, um, one I believe lives up in Pittsfield and the other one lives over in. Copake or something like that, or that way. So they're both about the same distance from town right now, so. That's where that is.
Okay, that's exciting, somehow I skipped over the big, the big fish, which is the bylaw review.
I was wondering, I thought maybe you were like, wanted to leave it to last, so it was going to take.
It was highlighted.
I know, I know.
So bylaw review, I. Am thinking that we should go over any change that we have this meeting and then I'll, I'll just compile it into one document. Susan, you, you said you sent over some language.
Uh, yeah, I sent her some stuff, so as we talked about it, the lang, any language I had created.
Yeah.
Who would already have and wouldn't have to worry about you creating it, because I hate that, I like, I had good wording and then I'm like, do it off the cuff and it's.
Yeah. I've created a little sheet of the changes that we're going to have to be transparent about.
Right, and, uh, good, because I also, I also came up with something, I called it, notes on the amended bylaws.
Yes.
Um, that I just, you know, like, article one, section two, no changes in posting places. Dropping posting at the intersection of Main and Swan Road while adding the town's website, now considered by the state's official posting site.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I don't, if you had wording already, I don't care, I just.
Yeah.
I just felt like the obvious ones, I wanted to make clear what changed.
I wonder if, in the sake of being not controversial, we just add the town website, we don't remove anything. Not that that Swan Road posting doesn't good, but it's.
They've been posting stuff inside the roadside.
Okay.
Yeah.
It was at or near the intersection?
Yeah.
And I don't know, maybe that's why it initially.
I, that's what I wanted.
I pictured it on a telephone pole.
Well, that's why when you say telephone pole, that's what it is, when I, I was in there Saturday morning. You know, looked at the bulletin board.
Well, I think the constable's a, a frequent customer, so. Why don't, I'm just thinking through that now, in the, in the sake of being not controversial, we just add the website.
I'm okay with that, but I'm fine with that.
Um, and that is something that I have listed as a change, I mean, really an update.
For article two, I wrote, and I did send you this back.
Yeah.
The list of town positions which the select board is empowered to appoint has been put into a single list. Note that changes in the employment market have made longer contracts increasingly to the benefit of the town and generally more attracted to applicants. Especially positions greater authority, that's, I mean, the chief of police has a three-year, not a one-year.
Yeah.
The chief of, the town administrator has a three-year, not a one-year.
That's an area where I want to figure out and haven't quite yet, what, where that came from. Did, was that just pulled from the old bylaws?
So I, I'm not exactly sure, looking through it, a bunch of them do say one year, but not all of them do. Like, the town clerk specifically says three-year, right, and some of them don't say, and I'm not sure why they. Crunched it into one, I'm not sure what the town administrator's in the list of one year, and I'm pretty sure that.
The town administrator's very.
Requirement for a one-year. Um, and so I'm not sure, I feel like they maybe listed all the things and assumed they're all one, I, I don't know, but.
Which is actually definitely not, I mean, we have other ones that have to be two years, like some of the inspectors.
So I actually put, I mean, and we could dig town courts out of there, because it, it does have its own rule. Although I'm not really sure why it needs one, and put shall be for terms of one to a maximum of three years renewable in the board's sole discretion. To cover all the various positions, now people may not like that because they wanted specific things, but.
I think what we, what actually needs to be done here, and I'm happy to do, is just shoot this to town council and say. Cause she brought up before when we were appointing gas inspectors, stuff like that, she said, well, actually your bylaw says it needs to be this, or mash train law says it needs to be this. Um, the whole list and say like, what does mash train law say, what does, what do our.
Bylaws.
Bylaws say.
Cause we could do, as empowered to appoint the following positions for the following terms, and you could have town administrator.
I don't know if we should have that list too, I want to review, that is one of the very couple of places that I thought needs to be. Gone over that bind to a comb and I haven't, I haven't done it yet.
But so, are we going to get that done by Saturday, I feel like we're not.
No, but it's just, that can be, uh, asterisk, question mark.
Right.
But the more that we can narrow down and say, these are the few areas that we're still researching, that absolutely need to be done well, because. That list needs to be done well, and, and I'm, I'm happy to work with Donna and figure it out.
Okay.
Okay, these are our one-year appointments, these are our two-year appointments, these are our three-year appointments, these are the ones that can be one to three years. Right, but I don't want to put us in a pigeonhole us beyond where we need to be, like, oh, town administrator needs to be. Three years or needs to be.
That's why I said one to a maximum.
But there's some of those that need to be.
Specific.
Specific.
Okay, that's fair, and that.
That's sort of like an asterisk.
Um, also, I agree with you, by the way, to take out quarterly and in a court with OML.
Yeah.
The, the all boards meeting.
Yeah.
I think at least one to here is fine, and I did make a suggestion to change two words. Boarding department to help coordinate current, because it was just awkward with the word they had.
Yeah.
And shall coordinate currently.
And so that's just one that we need to note to the degree that we're changing it, what was it previously in it?
Last time.
Was it quarterly?
If, if, uh, the only thing I could find was yearly, I did not find quarterly, I think somebody wanted it to be quarterly, but that doesn't mean it actually is.
Because that's another one where. One of very few asterisks that I'm fine. With whatever we decide to do, quarterly meeting, this is in the two thousand and six.
Which page?
The town, uh, paging, the town voted to authorize direct the select board to establish a quarterly meeting, announced in advance and open to the public. Consisting of at least one representative from each town committee or board, coordinate current and future town needs and activities.
But I feel like it got changed to yearly, but when is my question?
The other thing that I, the other thing that I wonder on this one is, is it a bylaw? Oh, I mean, I'm happy.
Is that a bylaw?
The nineteen ninety-five town meeting, did they vote to make a general bylaw to have a quarterly meeting? Or did they just vote to have the select board call a quarterly meeting, which wouldn't necessarily be a bylaw? No, I mean, like, this is the hard work, but if we can nix that as a bylaw, because frankly, I don't, if it never was a bylaw.
Right.
And it's not useful and it's never really been done on any regular basis, then why have it? So I'm happy to, that's another one that I have on my list of book into, you just brought up two of the three things that I think are worth looking into to say. Is this a bylaw, if so, we probably keep it, you know, your change is actually bring it more like to what it was.
Yeah.
Than to what it had been changed to, I think kind of arbitrarily.
I mean, I, I don't think, I, having been to a couple of them, like, I went, just as a member of the ZBA, I was in your on the select board. I, that one, I can't say that the couple I've been to have been particularly useful.
No, I mean, I think in general, we foster a cooperative collaborative environment, so when the ZBA chair needs to talk to. The building commissioner or to the tax collector or to the track, like, we make that communication app. We don't need a quarterly meeting.
Right. And I don't think anything wrong with doing yearly so that everybody gets to hear what people are doing, but.
I don't think it's our priority.
No.
And if it's a bylaw, we'll keep it, and if it was never a bylaw, we'll nix it, along with the various other things. Cause one of my lists is never were bylaws, but ended up in here, like highway commission, salary commission, personnel, policies.
Bylaws, what were they?
Town meeting voted for the select board to create one, but it was not, voted as a general bylaw, it was just town meeting.
So if the town meeting votes to ask the select board to do something, what happens with that?
It is a non-binding memorandum, so.
Basically, they're just saying, hey, we want you to do, that's the thing you're supposed to do at town. Right.
Recently, we had a couple, so back in twenty twenty-one, when we had the meeting to end all town meetings. That created the bylaw review committee. One of the things that erroneously ended up in the bylaws at one point, that never was a bylaw, was the public document posting. I was on the board at the time. It started out as this bylaw that said all public records need to be posted, that is a nightmare of a bylaw, that's just totally infeas- infeasible. There are thousands of pages of public records generated every day.
Right.
Many of them are, you know, actually, they might be public records, but parts need to be redacted. Because they're personnel information with social security numbers.
Right, right, right.
Or et cetera, et cetera. It turned into, okay, the select, it turned into a town meeting, not a bylaw, but the select board should post public documents. So what did we do with that, the select board took it and we decided, all right, we'll post all the documents that we use at our meetings to the town website along with our minutes. And we'll encourage other bodies to do the same, a policy of the town. We've done it, it works out well, because people, they watch the video, they read the minutes.
Right.
They're curious about something, they go on the website, so it actually turned out to be a good thing, but it was never a bylaw.
Right.
It would have to say in that this is a bylaw.
A general bylaw, now, there's some confusion before a certain year, way back in time. There were things that didn't say bylaws that were presumed to be bylaws, I don't, it gets very polluted, but we're not going to dig up all these old. Questions that the bylaw review committee has been working on for years, we need to be able to answer things, but. Like the nineteen seventy-nine highway planning commission, section sixteen of article two. The bylaw review committee has determined was never a bylaw, it's just the town voted to have the select board appoint a highway planning commission, it was not a general bylaw.
Right.
So, but I will put that in, never was a bylaws, I have four sections, add, subtract. And we can make fancier words, but things that we're adding, because we've been doing them, things that were subtracting. Changing and updating, and things that were never bylaws.
Right.
Then I have a fifth here, which is question marks, which hopefully we eliminate, though it was by the time we go to town meeting. Which you already hit two of the three, which is the all boards meeting and the select board.
Um, I'd also like to add to this, if we're doing this, can we please fix the number?
Yes.
Because, for example, they deleted sections, I think it's three, four, five, but then they didn't renumber them.
No.
I know, I know, the numbering.
And that's really annoying.
So the numbering is a- absolutely something, and I don't even think we need to explain that to people beyond, we've renumbered and reorganized.
Exactly, I mean, if you can't, if you want to do a thing like, you know, former article three.
No, I don't, no.
Like, just as notes.
Need to, I don't even think we need to, because.
Just renumber them.
It just is something that absolutely needs to be done, and then sometimes the town clerk has the unilateral authority to reorganize and renumber.
No, what I meant is, like, they are actually getting rid of some, and for example, the arti- for article five was a dilapidated vehicle.
So that's on my question mark, why do we get rid of it, was it an accident or on purpose? I don't think we should get rid of it.
There's no way it was an accident.
I don't know.
But I will tell you that I think a ten-dollar fine is, is very laughable. Given that the cost of disposing of a dilapidated vehicle from a property is at least in the hundreds, if not to the thousands of dollars. Most people would be like, here's your ten bucks.
But is it each, each dilapidated vehicle that has been allowed to stand a premise beyond a month or four weeks. May constitute a separate offense and each continuing day, so it'd be ten bucks a day. That being said, so a month would be three hundred dollars to keep your beater car in your lawn. That being said, I think we'll attach it to the fines capital, which is one of the questions that I have.
Yeah, yeah.
But I don't think we should get rid of that bylaw.
But they, it, it wasn't in the bylaw, they were proposing, so that's what they heard, right, yeah.
Question mark, I think we need to add it back in, unless there's good reason to not.
Trying to go back in order here, um, what did you do at the board of assessors and the board of trustees?
That is something that I think that we should add.
So I, I.
Say that we added, and I don't know if there are others.
Those are always true.
And I think it's also going to be partially, I'm going to get some questions together for Donna. You know, hey, we want to add board of assessors and library board of trustees, because we've had them since eighteen ninety.
Right.
Um, is there a reason why they're not part of the bylaws already, or should they be, or what's going on here? But.
But Mi- Mickey was thinking that it's mass law, and then what would be in the bylaws would be the election of the trustees.
Well, yeah.
I actually put in, there shall be a six-member board of library trustees, two of each who should be elected, each of whom. Two of each, shall be, we don't know what. Two of each shall be, who know what I put, sorry, the board of library trustees shall consist of six members. Two of whom shall be elected each year at the annual town election for terms of three years, it's in the back.
Yes.
And I did the same thing for board of assessors, the board of assessors shall consist of many members. One of whom shall be elected each year at the annual town election for term of three years.
Yeah.
I just tried to match the wording to the other one.
Yes, and I think it's just gonna be. As as simple as adding those in and saying in our. In our notes, we added these in because they've been around since we can find out, we already know for library, we can find out for assessors. And the only thing I'm gonna do is I'm gonna run it by Donna and say. Is this a sound idea? Is there a reason why we don't have them already? And I'm gonna quickly look. Compare to the town website and to our appointments and elections and see, is there anything else that? We should add in and it's gonna be, if it is, it will be simple, it will be like. The town has a parks commission, which I think is already in here, but if there's something like that that's missing, assuming. That's sorry thing to do, those would be ads.
Right, I didn't find any others.
Yeah.
Except for upstairs. Um article three disappeared, it was the amendment to the school district agreement.
Yeah.
On a single date in nineteen ninety three.
I don't think that that's a bylaw.
I don't think it's a bylaw either. But I do feel like if we're deleting something, we should make a mention of it. Like this was not, and you can say this was removed because it is not a bylaw.
Yeah.
Um whether we need to track it to keep record of it somehow, I don't know and where that would be, I also don't know. But at this point, it's probably moot since we probably have a new contract since it was nineteen ninety three.
I don't know if the school district agreement, I mean, I I just, I don't know, but I really don't think this is a bylaw. But we should say, cause when people are gonna have this book.
Yeah.
Well, we're gonna post online, when they're reading through, they can say, oh, the select board said we deleted it because it's not a bylaw.
Right.
And I think that's a lot better than people saying, how come?
It's deleted.
It's deleted.
Yes, I agree.
Um and. That's a good one to note and that will go under never was a bylaw, I presume.
Right, so former article four stated that the town has separately published only bylaws consistent with state law. This is unnecessary since we do have published only bylaws, right, so that's fair, why it's not there. Former article five, this article addressed dilapidated vehicles on private property and we had ten dollars trying to dispose of the vehicle properly. So that one, maybe we do wanna leave.
I think we keep, I, it's hard for me to believe. It's hard for me to believe that. That's not a bylaw.
Let's see, what does it say? Section one, upon complaint in writing to the select board or chief of police. The owner of the vehicle or the owner of the premises upon which an unregistered and dilapidated motor vehicle and or parts thereof. Has been allowed to stand shall remove said unregistered and dilapidated motor vehicle and or parts thereof. Within four weeks being informed of said complaint by the select board or chief of police. This bylaw shall not apply to premises licensed under chapter one forty, section fifty seven of the mass general law as amended. Whoever violates any provisions of this bylaw shall be liable to apply not to receive ten dollars for each offense. Each dilapidated motor vehicle or part thereof that has been allowed to stand, the premises beyond the four week period may constitute separate offense. And each continuing day of such violation may also be considered a separate offense. I'm fine with leaving it in. The fact that they didn't put it in made me just go away, but you're right, it actually says this bylaw.
We can follow up and I. With the bylaw review and with town council and just make sure, but I assume it's a bylaw. Uh and should just still be in, because we are trying to make minimal, minimal.
Yes, and I.
Like really no substantive changes.
It does say it's a bylaw and I see a point to keeping it, I mean, you don't see a lot of dilapidated vehicles in people's yards and moderate. But I I don't expect that that's because of this bylaw, but maybe I'm wrong. Um so uh we we need to make sure whatever we end up doing, the numbering is correct.
Yes, no, absolutely, that that wa- that is a high priority.
I did suggest um a rewording of section three of solicitor's permits. Um instead of, instead of the chief of police shall be if satisfied after reasonable investigation. That no false statements have been made in the application, he then shall issue the permit as applied for. To if satisfied after reasonable investigation that no false statements have been made in the application. The chief of police shall issue the permit, because I thought having a reasonable English sentence there was preferable. Um and not to be harsh or anything, but wow. Um. The personnel policies for town employees.
So that I think we want out of there, the only.
What the solicitor?
Pardon?
Which one do you wanna?
The solicitor. The personnel, the personnel bylaws or the personnel policy, we want out, the only question that we just need to, for the sake of transparency. Um was it? A bylaw and we're removing it, or was it never a bylaw, but I think in either case, we remove it because it just doesn't make any sense.
Right.
To have in the bylaws.
Personnel policies, all permanent and full time employees hired before July one eighty seven will receive fifteen sick days at the beginning of each fiscal year. Personal days, blah, 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 I mean, so far I'm not seeing anything that makes it a bylaw.
Well, I don't know, it could have been voted as a bylaw and in any case, I think we're all in agreement. That they shouldn't be in the bylaws, it's just, we just need to say, we, it's one of two things, it's, it was a bylaw and it makes no sense to have as a bylaw. Or it even never really was a bylaw.
So what I what I drafted, and again, we can choose not to use this if it's not applicable. It is a concerted opinion of both the bylaw committee and the select board that both the town and town employees will be better served by personnel policies. Practiced by people with active knowledge and experience in both personnel management and current employment law. In March of nineteen eighty eight, the town voted to empower the select board to handle personnel matters other than pay, which appears on the annual town budget each year.
That sounds good to me.
Yeah, I mean, I think it it's we've, it's come a long way because at that point, a lot of positions were still elected and it just was. It was very different.
It was very different, but also, I, you know, people were probably. Just not even following mass law about how you treated employees and. And now it's gotten to the point where the changes in personnel law make it difficult to keep up with that, even if you're just a regular person and it's not your field, so. But that does remind I need to reach to Lindsay and find out what's going on. Um. The next one was the town data processing center, except that went from article, former article seven to former article fourteen. That's the last step in the middle there.
Yeah, I think that's one that we have a good case, we have a good case to removing.
First removal, solid waste management, there's not really any changes in any of those other, as far as I could see. Other than the fine schedule thing.
I think I'll just check about the town data processing center with Donna. Uh to make sure that it's okay to remove it and then we just need to be clear in our notes saying we remove this because. It's entirely unnecessary.
Right, so what I said was, as technology has changed substantially since this article was passed, the select board has set the emission of this article. The town is continuing to upgrade their technology and data storage in accordance with changes in the field. We're extremely unlikely to ever undertake a large scale data storage center, nor would that be considered good practice at this time. Again, like I don't care, change any of it, I don't care, I just figured it was better to start with some language.
Where's the personnel committee in the two thousand and six version? I see the personnel policy was.
Uh.
Or did that come?
It was article seven, former article seven, I just.
That's personnel policies.
Um.
It's in a personnel committee, that's the only place it shows up.
Where is personnel committee?
In personnel policies for town employees in article seven. The select board will on a biannual basis appoint a personnel committee.
What section and what?
Uh it's it's article seven, it's just article seven.
But I see, I'm looking at article seven and it starts section one, sick day policy, section two, vacation.
I'm looking at the document that Susan sent.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering where it came from, the personal, the idea of having a personal committee. Cause that's one that we're not gonna do, it's just a question of, was it a bylaw and we're removing it or where did it come from?
So the two thousand and six ones that say their business dated March twenty six ninety eighty eight have. Section one, sick day policy, that's A. Doctor's notes, receive sick pay, employee terminated by him or the town, not entitled to unused sick day, sick pay. Section two is vacation, section three is computation of entitlement, section four is holiday policy, section five is the select board authorized. To make policy other than pay. And that's it, and then it goes on to regulation and motor.
Wait, so personnel, I'm looking here at the at the proposed document where where we found it and it's. It's, it says nineteen eighty eight, article seven, but I think that that is just a proposal of the. Says nineteen eighty eight, but it doesn't show up in the two thousand and six version.
Was it in?
So maybe that's just a proposal. Have a a personnel committee, so we wouldn't need to explain to people that we're not having a personnel committee.
If it's not in there.
If it's not, if it never was a bylaw.
Right.
We just don't have to say anything about. Cause the March twenty six nineteen eighty eight comes at the beginning of personnel policies and we'll just say, we're removing these. We don't have to say anything about a personnel committee because it never has been a bylaw. I think. I'll double check into that, but I think that was someone's solution.
Right.
The problem is what's biennial, every two years?
Yes. Yeah, and it's not in the in the no town bylaws original M N document either.
Yeah, so that was someone's idea.
It was someone's idea.
So what I'll do is I will go through and. And make the change that we discussed about and work off of your letter, Susan, and combine it in with my list of what we've added, changed. Um and there's a couple of question marks, like. I think dilapidated vehicles just needs to be in there.
I I would agree with you.
But we'll make sure, because maybe there's a reason it's not.
What about the fire department real estate tax?
If you look in the town administrator version, can you go to town administrator version easily? There's a note in there about that believing it's been deleted.
Can, what's the number? I'm trying to find it, I gotta scroll through.
Oh, it's late, it's sixteen.
That's something. It's really funny to have some are super short and some are ridiculously long. The town data processing center is like one sentence and then and then like. The law permit thing is like six pages. Volunteer, uh article, so March fifteen ninety four. The town shall provide a real, and you're saying what, non official copy, please contact.
No, you don't see the note there? And I.
No.
Look it up, I see a note. And my note says.
Oh, it's on your side, it's like, oh wait, maybe it's paying on track changes or something? Oh, mine's a preview though. For the PDF, so I don't think that you have like, what do you have, like a Word file?
Deleted, I believe we got rid of this when we became a paid volunteer department.
Ah. Hmm.
Don't know what year, don't know what month, don't know what town meeting. But that's a belief and then it doesn't show up in our new version. So that's like a dig in area, research.
And they may have researched it, but they didn't tell us.
They didn't tell us, because the problem was they said no substantive changes and it looks like five different people working on it over the course of a couple of years, so they may have forgot. But it may be, I think what it's gonna come down to is sitting down at this list. And just saying, here's these four questions we have, why is this not in here, why did this?
Cancel the meeting subject because we don't have these things answered.
I'm, is it at one thirty on Saturday?
Yeah.
I mean, I'd have to go and even just start, I think it's good for. Uh even transparency. Um.
So on the research side of this, this is all just about going back and looking at old meeting minutes.
Kind of, it, I think a lot of it's gonna be relying on, cause I, like I said, I'm happy to kind of take this on as my little thing. Uh or take on some of the responsibility behind aggregating. Uh so it's gonna be a combination of looking at old town meeting minutes, but also just asking. The bylaw review committee, did you already do this? And targeting town council and town council is familiar with this document because she's looked at it.
Right.
And looked at specific things on it, so it's just trying to figure out. The problem is, we lost along the way, some decisions were made, but there weren't necessarily documentation of why.
Right.
And so what we need to be able to present is we removed article fourteen from the two thousand and six version. Because you'll note that in two thousand and ten it was voted down, it was removed by town meeting. Or we removed it because we've never had an agricultural commission and it's literally never formed, and so we're just removing it to.
That's what we're actually.
That's what we're actually doing and we're adding a library board of trustees because.
We've been doing it since eighteen ninety.
Yeah, so but it's having that one pager or two pager at the beginning of just being upfront about what your changes are. So you don't put the document out in the public and then get all these questions of, why is this missing, why is this added? Okay, we'll look at that one pager.
Um by the way, I I don't know if you agree, but I sort of feel like the non criminal disposition. Was essentially a fine split.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, that's what probably its purpose. Um. And I, you know, that's, so we'd be replacing that with the the fine schedule, but it's not really, it's not substantively different. It just.
I think everything on page thirty one and after.
Yep.
Is something to be looked at, like the town agreement with the Grange doesn't make sense. To have unless somehow it was. Bylaw, but yeah, the the non criminal disposition is the beginning of a fine list, right?
Yeah.
And we'll just be upfront about that too, we'll say we did, we did a a schedule of fines to keep them all, you know, clear in one place.
But instead of listing the actual amount in the bylaw.
And how often did anyone find for any of these things?
I think probably never. I think the only thing.
Must have been something that made him like with the car or some must have happened.
Oh, yeah.
Right, people there, and you know.
People had too many Model A's in the front.
I mean, people are like, why do we even have a green motor act and they don't remember that back in the seventies, there were literally rivers on. Fire from all the athletes in the water.
Yeah.
Right, like, why do we even need that? Nobody does that, I'm like, yes, yes, they do and they will if you get rid of it, like.
I think we'll keep Saturday and it might even just end up being me asking.
I'll tell.
Questions.
I have it on my calendar all the time.
Yeah.
But but I don't think, and 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 people may come, and I think at the very least they can talk about what they've been doing. Because people are, even though it's been going on for three years, people are like, what's going on?
Why are you doing this right now?
It's an incredible amount of work, people are, I mean, too, you get into the living like now, but now the work it is in the research and. You know.
I don't know how many fines we actually.
Collect.
Collect.
It's more of a threat.
Yeah, I mean, the only, the only.
It's because we have such law abiding citizens.
It's an older group too.
The only one that I think is active and we hardly, is the alarms and that doesn't happen very often anymore as far as I know.
No.
They've gotten better.
Also, I have to ask, like, how often do you think a solicitor's permit is being issued? I mean.
I think Brian works on it two or three times a week.
I think we can keep it.
Maybe during the hours a decade, I'm not saying we need to get rid of it, certainly not for this, I'm just saying that I find it amusing. That we have that much language devoted to something I'm pretty sure never happens.
You know what, I think we're, did it though, didn't people go to door to door about rooftop solar?
Yeah.
Yeah, but you know, in the olden days, door to door solicitation was very common.
Right, but he's not.
Especially with the internet, it's dead, I mean, as a kid.
Well, there might be Girl Scout cookies.
No, even the Girl Scouts don't do it, they just put a table in Great Barrington. Yeah, exactly, exactly, I mean, no, like, no one's going around selling Fuller brushes or encyclopedias.
Or vacuum cleaner.
Or vacuum cleaners or any of it, right, like that solar thing was about the only one.
When was that, when was that proposed?
Does it say what year? Nineteen sixty seven.
That's when my dad was a Fuller brush salesman.
There you go.
Was it what?
Fuller brush salesman just like.
I mean, I'm gonna say we should actually ask Brian. I'll stop by and ask Brian when the last time he had to pull out. I'll live in, I'll stop by and ask Brian when the last time he had to pull out.
He may look at you, he may not even be familiar with it.
I think what happens sometimes though, cause I have seen it recently, unfortunately, there are. Uh, people who are committing crimes by pretending to be door to door rooftop solar. Um, and so it is good if we do have people who are legitimate door to door rooftop solar, that they check in with the police.
I, I'm not gonna say it's not, the question is, does anybody do that?
Yeah.
Because if, I, I happen to know a tiny solar thing by my house, if they didn't get a permit and they're legitimate, you think the ones that are legitimate are getting a permit? Or like, would people even know to ask, let me see your permit?
Well, I think you call, you call the police and you say, there was a gray Honda Civic, here's the plate.
Right.
Was at my house and I got it in my webcam. And then, you know, the police say, okay, thanks for letting us know, that is someone who pulled a permit, they're selling solar. Doesn't mean they couldn't pull a permit and then do something bad, but.
Right.
It's one level of protection.
Right. I'm not saying we should get rid of it, I just think if it's not actually ever being used, I have to wonder why we have it, but it's not a huge amount of stuff, it's just. Oh, I think I had one other thing where I thought something ought to be moved.
Well, I think the, um, municipal, department of municipal inspection should go towards the front with the kind of the boards and committees.
Yeah.
And instead of towards restrict, restraining your dog. But I think, you know, those are the kinds of things that we'll, we'll say, we don't have to specify, we can just say, no, we reorganized and clarified it. To be more accessible, and we don't have to go into detail and say, we've moved article five to article two and article three to article four. It's just, there's a general understanding, we'll reorganize.
Right.
But I feel good, as much of a list as we do have, I think we're gaining a lot of clarity. And we can, you know, as you drafted the letter already, go and say, this is what we've done and reduce a lot of those questions when we go to town meeting.
Um, I was suggesting that the personal, personnel policies thing, uh, which. That I, that we just put in dislike words authorized to influence town policies concerning town boys and personnel areas other than pay. Right, and move that to, to article.
I, I don't know if we need it at all, I wonder if we just delete it entirely, because.
We may not. We actually currently have that, by the way, that's the last thing in that personnel section.
What I think, I think the two thousand and six more has, more or less has the personnel. Stopped down as.
Right, it would be the last part of the.
Oh, yes, that, what you wrote was currently in there, yes, yes.
Right, yes, yes, and I was gonna say that that should be the old, that.
But we. But we have jurisdiction over pay too.
But it's still on the work.
Well, it goes to town meeting.
Yes, it goes to town meeting.
But, but actually, we approve a budget and then sometimes.
Right.
We approve a budget for administrative assistant, but then we hire halfway through the year, and so we have more flexibility.
Right.
We go back to town meeting and say, we actually wanna carry different hours or.
Right. Yep.
I.
And I'm finally gonna get that.
Unless Donna, I think unless Donna has a good reason, otherwise we just.
Take it out.
Don't have specific personnel policies in the down bylaws.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Unless we have a general statement saying. The select board. Manages personnel policies.
Right. And you know, my suspicion is that that happened because the select board wasn't treating employees. And at some point, the residents were like, you better do this. We're gonna make you do it, if you, we tried to get you to do it, you wouldn't do it, so now we're making you do it. I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know.
Like it was done in eighty eight, who was, uh, on this lift in eighty eight, I have to go look up the.
I, I don't know the reason, I mean, I think maybe they just thought it was. Should be a bylaw, if the problem is you just can't keep up now, stuff changes, you have COVID and all of a sudden everyone works from home.
John, I completely agree with you, it doesn't belong in bylaws.
Or you hire. Doesn't belong.
It's completely inappropriate, I'm saying the reason, my suspicion is that historically, the reason it ended up in there. Was that there were a group of people who felt the town employees weren't being treated adequately. And wanted to force the select board to take action regarding that. So they put it in there directly, like, we think you need to do this at a minimum, but it stayed in there.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay, and maybe they'll have to, like, if the, if some future select board, at, long after us. Isn't toe in the line, town meeting can do it again, but having those old things in there doesn't make it exciting.
You had to work for the town for one year before being entitled to getting paid holidays.
Paid holidays, wow.
Yeah. New Year's Day, Memorial Day, Labor Day, we had to work at least one year for the town.
At least they were giving you sick days though.
Yeah.
Fifteen, one man, back then.
I know. So, okay.
All right, I think we're like definitely still working progress, but we're, we're, we're making progress, which is what's important, and, uh, I'll be at the meeting on Saturday, certainly.
Um, it's my plan to be there too.
I have a plan to be there.
How, what do you, do you have a thought of what you wanna do with either the revolving fund or the, the funds or the paid, the fee schedule?
That's a.
Do you wanna go ahead and try the fee schedule?
The fee schedule, I think we do wanna put the fee schedule in, we just need to be clear, okay, we're putting in a fee schedule.
Okay. Right.
And you have to double check, cause sometimes fees are different between, you know, your dilapidated. Vehicle fee, you might get a daily basis. Versus, um, other fees, you might get a per time basis and the money. Just wanna, I just wanna clarify that it works in every case, if that makes any sense, so like. Your dilapidated vehicle, you get ten dollars a day, or maybe we decide it's twenty.
Right.
But if you have a false alarm where you call the police and fire out. Continuing the same fee doesn't make sense, escalating makes more sense, like, you need to get this alarm system under control, because. It's very different than having a dilapidated car in your yard. So, I just wanna flesh all that out, make sure it works, but I, I think in general, I'm in favor of doing the fee schedule, it's like. You said is more or less at the back of the. So. Um, I think I'll take your. Um, document, Susan, and what I have here, try to match it all together and come back to it, and. What we can always do, like I said, is instead of working in track changes, which is very cumbersome. Work on a clean document again and again, and then you can always compare. Uh, and then that can show what changes have been made.
Um, what you could do with something like a dilapidated motor vehicle could be, it says penalty, ten dollars per day out of, per day.
Yeah.
Right. Or you could do ten dollars per vehicle per day.
Yeah.
Um.
Um.
Because I think here, it, here in this list, it just says ten dollars, but I believe in the text, it says per vehicle.
Yeah, well, that's. We'll figure, we'll figure out, but we identified that as something that probably should go back in.
Yeah.
We'll figure out the details. Um, moving on, cause it is getting a little.
Yep.
Um, the only thing about the schoolhouse is we need to think about. What restrictions we want, and I guess really what I need to do is email Donna and ask what restrictions can we have? Um, she has been. Working on the. Land donation.
Hmm.
I have a question about land, someone asked me at fifty seven and twenty three, there's that building there.
The Haylock Gallery?
Yeah, they say the town owns that property?
Uh, not the Haylock.
No.
A small piece of property next to it.
It's right there, if you, if you come on twenty three, head east, take.
Oh, the island in the middle of the road?
Yeah, what, yeah.
Oh, the island?
It's not the island, but there's a little building there that's been there and it's always overgrown.
The white one on the.
Right hand.
That's the Haylock, yeah.
No, that's, uh, that's not ours.
So, this, I see town of Monterey.
That's owned by.
Wait, sorry, I'm looking at the community center property, kind of like twenty three, that was really coming off.
There is a tiny piece of property that we do own.
Yeah, which we know about, it's on our, it's on our.
But there's not a building there.
Yeah.
Okay.
The building's right, right on.
Next to it.
Right, yeah, cause it's someone I talked to, he called me, he called me, he was interested in the building.
Who was interested by it?
The neighbor, somebody.
Somebody, he, he thought it would be a place, he was in construction, it'd be one of the places.
So, we are, that is a back burner thing, that's unfortunate back burner for a while. But it goes right along with the schoolhouse, it's like a headache to sell simple stuff. So, that's probably why, but on the upside, we do have a list that Susan and I have been through before. I think maybe you've been before you were on the board, which is how long ago it was. Um, of the parcels of land and. There's some, there's one down by the lake off of Eaton Road that just does absolutely nothing for the town, it could never do anything for the town.
I'm not sure it'd do anything, right?
There's others, like the children's forest. Uh. When you, right before you hit the flats there, a mile or so towards Barrington. That the town owns and we just own it, and I don't think we're in any rush to sell it, or there's the. Piece of property where the rope swing is off of River Road. That we thought we would maybe sell or something, but technically Linda Thorpe dug up. The town report and the town meeting minutes, et cetera, and it turns out that property was donated to the conservation commission.
Oh.
Specifically, so it now has a specific use. So, and interestingly enough, one of the things that I kinda learned was. When, I think when this town hall renovation was going on, if I remember correctly, the details are fuzzy, when this town hall renovation was going on. The conservation commission said, as remediation for whatever negative impact the renovation and town hall was having. They should get rid of the parking spot on that piece of property off of River Road, and apparently they put the guard rail. Right over, so you, there was no parking spot. But then the bridge was redone at the very beginning of River Road.
Right.
And when the bridge was redone, the parking spot reappeared. So this what happens.
I have a wealth of information.
I know, right?
You have the appendix in the bylaws here.
So, this was an interesting little tidbit, we had, Roger and I had a meeting with Sean and Chris up at the firehouse. And one, one little piece of history is that apparently Edith Wilson at one time had had a plan to. Reroute, basically put the town center to get it away from the water, so we could have a more active town center. On Fox Hill Road, and to run Fox Hill all the way to Lake to extend it with the bridge to Bear Town. And they, nobody supported it at the time, but it would have allowed for the development of a town center that wasn't limited by the river.
Right. But someone said there used to be a ball court up there.
Yeah, nine holes. But. Those little pieces of land are, I think we gotta figure out the schoolhouse first, we gotta figure out the piece of land we're accepting.
Yeah.
Yeah, I saw the email that you sent.
Yeah, I just gotta call back during this meeting.
I ran into, uh, John Silver at the. At the transfer station the other day and, um, we happened to mention that piece of land, he was like. What's it gonna cost to maintain it, and you know what, like, the only reason he's donating is because can't, no one can build on it, because it's a flood plain. I'm like, you know what it'll cost to make a beach out of it, I'm like, I don't know, but the town would finally have frontage on the lake. Public access, other than the boat ramp to lake, he was like. Like, plus we have the open space plan, which now gives us the opportunity to apply for ways to renovate.
Well, even a parking grant.
Yeah.
I mean.
Yeah.
So, we don't have to develop it tomorrow.
No, we don't.
Where else do you get six acres?
You don't.
Just be fun, too, and it's got a brand new fence, so we can put a lock on it and cover it every ten days. But, I mean, you're not gonna find, nobody else is gonna build land, I mean, it's crazy.
I think what it comes down to too is it is up to town meeting in a couple of weeks here, and I think we have good reasons to take it.
Yeah, and I, I was really raising it, just because I suspect we will hear that.
Yeah.
And I think it's good for us to think about how we would respond to that.
I, I just think, you know.
Yeah.
I don't, you know, it's like, you'd be damned to do, you know.
I don't really think it's putting us at a huge liability, because if we wanted to, we could do no mow men. Right, like, mowing is our, mowing is our expense and you really, uh. Don't even really need to do that per se. Now, to, whatever we wanna invest in it, we can, but we're not.
But we don't have to invest in it tomorrow, you know, we got other folks pressing me.
And you don't have to be careful about never mowing, by the way, Roger, because then you get, you get, um, shrubs and trees coming up. And then fixing that is way worse than mowing.
So, just no mow men and then mow once a month.
Yeah, just there, yeah.
But, all that being said, I, I do see where John's coming from, and I think that has been my concern to some degree.
Mine.
What are we getting ourselves into? But I think at the end of the day, it's too good of an opportunity to pass up, and we're really, the main, mowing. We already mow so many properties that added mowing bill, I don't think it's a big enough reason to stop.
I, I consider, I mean, I, I think the possibilities are huge, I don't think there's a big downside. Um, and, and I think we'd be bullish not to.
Right.
So.
It looks like there's one.
Yeah.
Oh, Donna did, uh, cause she's working with, uh, his lawyer to draft the deed. And there are two conditions, which I think to some degree we're already familiar with, but I just wanna run back by you, which is the. Black or signage commemorating the donor's family, and then no building on it, and I, and I followed up with Donna to say, just to clarify. By no building, are we prohibiting bathrooms or pickleball. Courts or a little shed to store your softball equipment or your beach equipment, or is it?
No dwellings.
Or is it no dwellings or no commercial buildings, and she's gonna follow up, but I think in, in any case.
And without parking, that would be a different.
Yeah, so I, I, my sense is that we're not banned from doing a shed, but she's just gonna follow up with that.
Right.
And at the end of the day, all the town meeting vote has authorized us to accept it, so. We still have the final say, and if it ends up being, you're not allowed to cut the grass there.
Right.
Which it's not what it is, but for instance, we could always say, well, that, we can't accept it with that, and we can negotiate, so. Um, just a little update on there, and yeah, if everyone gets a chance to call the other.
Maybe, maybe suggesting a switch from building to dwelling.
Yeah, well, I don't know what the intent.
If that's what they intend to, if that's what they intend, right, but I'm just saying that would, yeah, that would make a good clarification.
I don't know what the intent is. We'll clarify in no case.
Oh, cool.
Um. Which I got entirely sidetracked from the schoolhouse, but the point being with the schoolhouse, I need to ask Donna, what restrictions can we put on it? Right, and then we can discuss if we want restrictions on the schoolhouse, or if we just want it.
I, I mean, I just don't, with no, with no ability to get water. I don't even know what we could do on that thing.
So, as of where is, and you figure it out.
I know.
Yeah.
Um, moving on, are you trying to?
It, I guess it's kinda weird, cause you have to do all your due diligence before putting, uh, it out for bid, it's not like a typical real estate contract. Here, I give, I want forty five days to do my due diligence.
Well, plus you put it out for bid, but that doesn't mean anyone will put it in it.
Well, you may get a low ball, I mean.
Well, right, but they may not anyway. What I'm saying is if you, if you're not, if you're not careful with the restrictions, then you have a property that already has some limitations. But it is still good to think about, I'm, I'm just saying like.
We just need to consider it.
Yeah.
We'll have to see what our options are before we decide one way or another.
Yeah.
And yeah, God forbid, we go through this whole process and we still own it and there's no buyer.
I, I think it's likely.
Right.
So what are we gonna do?
I don't know, but we have to at least try. I, I think we need to at least try.
And a fire department next door, I put bid for twenty five dollars and then tear it down, that would be your.
Yeah.
Well, what's a tare down cost? That's an expensive yard.
Yeah, not that expensive.
That was a tare down, yeah, but that, that would be, that would be an expensive tare down because of the.
Let's, let's.
I bet, your, your tens probably hundreds of thousands.
For tare down there?
Really?
I don't know, but.
Is that asbestos?
No, but I mean, just you actually, you gotta deal with the foundation, you gotta get the septic cleared, I don't know, you're talking tens of thousands.
Well, I think tens of thousands for a lot of.
Give, give it to the fire department to practice on.
Yeah.
They used to do that where I live.
Yeah.
They done it in Monterey, they did it to John, where John loved it. Okay.
Okay.
Uh, town administrator updates or anything?
Um, not really, and, uh, the, the whole bus transfer at the community center.
Yeah.
It's going pretty well, just as far as.
Oh, good.
But RJ gave a good thumbs up on it, and everybody seems to be happy with it, they're actually doing it in the mornings now too, I guess, as well as the afternoon, so.
Were they, they were only doing?
Initially, they were only gonna do it in the afternoons, but they decided to try the mornings, the mornings worked.
What were they, what were they doing in the morning?
I guess the same spot, they was trying to do it at the same spot, but they only asked to do it in the afternoons, so.
Right.
I came across that bus the old way they used to do it, and it was horrible. Cause the two buses were parked right across from Kevin's house and that major intersection.
Yeah.
Yeah.
None of them had their Scott sign up, so I'm waiting, and then the bus, I was like, go around. Then I do, and there's oncoming traffic. It was a mess.
Yeah, it's, it works out pretty well right now, so everybody seems to be happy. Um I'm starting to work on uh the whole clear belt process. I'm sending them some data right now.
Is it enabled to talk to anybody?
I actually did. I talked to uh Alex, I can't remember his last name, from Truro. We had a nice conversation about it and the whole process and what they went through and what he does. They're a very similar community to us. They have. Twice as many, they have about two thousand people, very similar. You know, instead of us, you know, we go from one thousand to three or four thousand people. They go from two thousand to twenty thousand people in the summer. So they have a, yeah, but they use it.
Truro's on the Cape?
Yeah, it's just south of Providence Town. There's a way out there in the end. And so they they uh he had lots of good things to say. A lot of what he is doing is sort of the same stuff that I was thinking of doing. Initially, to get started and move.
How long have they been using it?
Uh, he's been, it was actually there before him, so I think it's, they've had it for six or seven years, but it pretty much languished. And so he, when he was hired, he came down from Somerville and went out there and he um. He got it going again. He basically just had to kickstart it himself and get everything working. So it's a small enough. A lot of the same stuff, you know, departments with like three lines or four lines of of budget and that sort of stuff. So a lot of it, he kinda does himself with some input from the the different departments. And then he has been some reviewers and that sort of stuff. So it's a lot of like what we would be looking at too, what I would be looking at. But he was, he was pretty positive about it. So, so yeah, I, it's cool.
Then I recall, they were also looking to do a full time fire department.
They actually went to a full time fire department. They had all the same, you know, it's funny, it was a good conversation because they went through all the same struggles. That were going through with their fire department out there in Truro and they uh. I didn't, I didn't really get into the nuances of what the department, how big it was, but they realized they had to have a full time fire. Staff fire department out there, so, cause they just couldn't keep anybody, everybody was aging out, you know, they didn't. So they they went about three years ago, I think he said. It took them three years to get to it. They had, they actually had the overrides to get to get the money to do it, so. But yeah, it was, it was a good conversation. So I'm moving forward with that. And then my last question. What what are your thoughts? You don't have to be too in depth, I guess, cause it's almost eight, about green communities.
I don't know enough about it.
Cause we had to stop. My my understanding is we had to stop because we didn't have enough in our buildings, which are really this building. The library, which is, I guess, of Leeds, the community center. We didn't have enough to make it of any value. To buy into it, to call ourselves a green community, because we weren't gonna get the cost savings that we could. But now they're including non, but we're not the only small town that ran into that, so now they're including non municipal buildings. So we can include the fire department. We just have to prove that our money that we're paying them is being used to pay their electricity. So something like that is my understanding. So is there value in following up on it? The only thing we're losing out on are grant, grant dollars.
The thing that confused me a little bit is we have a couple neighbors that aren't green communities. Like according to this map.
Yeah.
From the website, New Marlboro, Otis, Tarrington. Sheffield aren't, but there's a lot of small towns that are, Sanusfield, Tomlin, Blandford, Beckett, Washington, Hinsdale, Peru. I mean, these are small towns, Chester, just like us, so.
My only thing is that their buildings that at the time were just at a condition where it was. Advantages for them to get in the green communities.
I mean, look at this, two hundred and ninety five out of three fifty one. This is in in April of twenty four. That's the map. Of which green communities, right?
So it's more communities are in than aren't.
Oh, by law. I mean, Berkshire County is one of the areas across the state that has less.
Right.
Involvement, but you know who would actually knows more about this than, I think, probably more than any of us is is Peter.
Yeah.
And.
And I I.
I thought he was the one who actually raised this issue initially.
Peter, Peter.
Peter Rickett um was saying exactly that, that it would worth revisiting now that they've changed the rules and would allow. Um pu- buildings that are used by public entities but aren't technically owned by the town.
So I guess there was.
Included.
There was some grant money or something, because Berkshire Regional Planning Commission was doing the study, and they just stopped, so. I could reach out. I just wanted to make sure I can kinda start the process. I just wanted to make sure.
I mean, if there was grant money that would be available because we have the designation and it was possible for us to get it with a reasonable amount of mark, I don't see it now.
I'll reach out to them. That's all I have.
Yeah, if you look at these grants, I mean, there's just, these towns are getting hundreds of thousands of dollars for these grants. Andover, yeah, I mean, probably more than a million.
Andover, that's who was in that, she was a woman who does their uh grants from Andover was on that call on Monday. And she was saying she's, she's gotten lots of money, like lots of money.
Even Beckett got a hundred and forty one thousand and one grant and thirty one thousand. Yeah, the Fund Energy Conservation Measure's audits, weatherization, lighting, fuel conversion. Design services in municipal buildings, including town hall and highway garage.
That's what I mean, if you have like a rundown sort of town hall.
Right.
It may be, there may be some value there, but if you have a brand new town hall or a brand new library that's Leeds compliant and.
Right.
Community center that.
But I'm not sure the town hall would qualify.
I don't, I don't know. It seems like one of those things we should probably do.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
The highway department would be.
Yeah.
Well, that's what I don't know. I, cause I was asking, I was talking to Dennis about that, and I mean, as a building, the doors are open all the time.
Yeah, but yeah, but you look at, okay, they wanna do the siding.
Yeah.
Okay, if you go with an insulated metal siding.
Yeah, I don't know.
What, you know, and stuff like that, you know, you take a look at it, it has probably very little R value now.
Yeah.
You can get.
You can make a big improvement.
You make a big improvement, you don't, you know, if you don't ask, you won't know, but I mean, you could do some things over there.
Yeah, I'll I'll reach back out.
You know.
Such as Berkshire Regional Plan.
There's things like, you know, um, yeah, the heat pumps and stuff like that, you know, more efficient. I think we should give it a shot, you know.
Uh it doesn't seem like it has a big downside, except, yeah, nothing we have to do, but, you know.
Right.
Any other unanticipated business?
I did meet with Sean and Chris. I actually met Chris for the first time. I had a good meeting Monday morning. And Dell's gonna do the work with the contract. I need to get a hold of Steve. From the finance committee and set up an meeting. And we're ready to, he's gonna give the posting. Um and get the, get the other one year contract signed.
Okay.
But, you know, we talked about transparency needs, monet custody needs, and we'll just have to work through it.
All right, minutes. The only ones we have is October first.
I just had one little change, the other one was a good.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't find anything that I thought needed changing, yeah, it was fun.
I'm almost done with the October eighth, but not. And then I wanna talk about meeting schedule quickly, cause in part. We've been meeting a lot.
Yeah.
So it's been hard to keep up with the minutes. Yeah.
That's the only change I thought I could, the minutes, uh minutes.
Right, oh, the minutes, just adding up.
Yeah.
All right, I will uh, I would move that we approve the minutes of October first as amended.
I second the motion. I beat you this time.
Hey, I gotta give you something.
We'll call.
Dog bone down there.
We'll call a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, so I'll get those posted. And, oh, meeting schedule, so. I think we deserve a break.
Yeah.
Cause we've met five times in the last four weeks, and I can't keep up with writing minutes.
Yeah, and the town meeting is a week from Saturday.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And. The, I think the state federal elections, the November fifth, the Tuesday.
It's the Tuesday.
So we're not meeting that day, which throws a little bit of a wrench into things.
I'm I'm sort of having a hysterical worry about next Tuesday, that Tuesday, but yeah.
So we can do a couple things. We can just. Meet on the twenty ninth, not have our break. We can meet on Wednesday, the sixth. We can try to go to November twelfth. I don't think it's very wise.
It seems unwise. If we met next week, can you think of anything that would be on the agenda?
Um, we would keep going on a bylaw document, which is, which is actually really a good thing to do, but.
Wouldn't be bad to be able to bring together whatever we got out of Saturday.
Totally necessary, like not timely.
Yeah.
Urgent, um, I'm just looking, cause the first thing I always do when I'm setting the agenda is just looking to today's and seeing what got left over. The financial interest disclosures will probably readdress, but again, not urgent. Uh, I'm hoping we're hiring an administrative assistant soon, but not holding my breath.
Here's the thing, if if we have someone to hire, we can make a special meeting.
Yes.
Right, like if, cause I give that enough priority and it's taken so long to get into this place.
I think if it wasn't for the state and federal election, we'd just say, okay, our next meeting is the fifth.
I would agree with you.
That throws things a little bit of a wrench in things, and I don't know if we should just say our next regular meeting will be the sixth. And just go from there. Obviously, there's always the, we need to call a meeting, but. With the sixth work for people, it's a Wednesday.
Yeah, works for me.
All right, well, let's just say that's our next one. Um, uh, at least for now, and. It will be good if we get that town meeting vote in, and Donna's already working on drafting the deed. Uh with the donor's attorney, that we will need to get a little bit. Of a jump on, because we'll have permission from town meeting approving, assuming that article passes. But now we need to talk specifics, like.
Right.
What are the deed restrictions? What are the conditions of the transfer? Which is up to us a little bit, so. And then another thing is, depending on how the historical commission funds go for the district consultant. That's either affirmation that yes, we are putting those ARPA funds as initially allocated, or no, we're we're. We're moving them, so.
It makes a lot of sense to actually have a meeting, right, soon after the.
Yes. So, those are all things going on. We'll get a week off. We'll come back, we'll do minutes. Anyway.
It it would be great to have the minutes before. With five day of the.
Yeah, well, I have these ones out at eight AM, right?
Well, you get my point. Little more elite time. I know.
I thought that was pretty good.
Yes.
At eight AM. But and here's the other thing, if ever we don't have time, time to uh deal with them, that they just got, they just.
I know, that's actually, I don't know, are we, do we have any issue because we're getting behind?
No, we're actually totally legal.
Okay.
We're totally legal. It's just meeting five times in in four weeks.
Yes, that that's true.
And focusing on that, the warrant.
Yeah.
We got a little bit, that's all. Um, I'll move that we adjourn.
I'll say.
And we'll call a vote.
Alright, yes.
Say yes, and that's unanimous vote to adjourn the meeting at eight oh four PM.